Coram.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. If we could actually amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Baker is here?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like all colleagues, guests, and staff. Oh, we can also amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor O'Malley is here. Thank you. At this time, I would like all guests, staff, and colleagues to please rise as Counselor McCarthy introduces our clergy for the day, who will take us through the invocation. I ask that everyone remain standing as he takes us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good afternoon, everybody. Today, I'm very proud to welcome Brian Guerin, Reverend Brian, Reverend Dr. Brian Guerin. He has a lot of things that he's done, but most importantly, he's my golfing buddy. So, that's, you know, we gotta start with the important stuff. But Brian has an incredible story. For the last 34 years, Brian's worked with people overseas, as well as people in Boston, who financially are under-resourced. He's been applying his experience that to help more Christians address this issue of rising poverty and homelessness in the Route 128, 495 corridor. He runs a foundation called Restore, and I gave you a little information on that. The Restore strategy is to build strong relationships and partner agencies with churches to recruit and equip and help deploy additional volunteers. Volunteers are trained to understand the systems of poverty and homelessness and how to develop mutually life-changing relationships with the people experiencing, that are experiencing poverty and homelessness, with the focus in Boston. Brian literally is one of the nicest guys I know, so it was an honor to introduce Dr. Reverend Brian Guerin.
Let's pray. Oh, Lord, we thank you that you are good, that you are powerful, that you are great, that you are all in our lives. God, I thank you for the privilege and the honor to be able to address this body today. Lord, you are the one that have put each of these counselors into their seats. You're the ones that work with their staff to be able to help them do the work that you've called them to do. Father, help them as they have been appointed by you to do the work of this great city. Lord, we pray that they would have a great understanding of the myriad problems that are happening within Boston. We pray against the system of homelessness that continues to grate people into a grind. Father, we pray for affordable housing alternatives, for people to be able to have a place that they could call their own. Father, we just ask that the businesses and the people of this great city would realize and understand that you are their director, that you are their God, that you are the one who leads them in everything that happens to them. Father, I just pray that in the deliberations that happened for this council today, that these things will be done according to your purpose. We pray, God, that you would give all of these counselors the wisdom, the knowledge, the understanding to be able to make the decisions that would be cognizant for the best betterment of the people of Boston. And, Lord, we thank you for that. Lord, I just pray that you continue to help each of these people with their families. They have massive commitments to be able to attain to, and that sometimes it takes a cost on their families. We just pray, God, that you'd help them in each one of their family experiences to be able to know that you're with them, that you guide them, and that you connect them to where they need to be. Father, thank you for what you do and how you do it in this great city, for we ask this in your precious name, Sabagalini Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, I have a special presentation, and I would like to invite up Sarah and Juan and anyone else Sarah might want to bring. Juan. He can come up here, sorry. He never wants to come up. He's just telling Sarah Juan never wants to come up. So I want to thank Juan because he's playing, he played a special role in making sure that this happened today. And it's a special presentation recognizing lupus and the Walk to End Lupus. And there's this long citation, which I will not read this whole thing to Sarah. But we wanted to acknowledge that this campaign is happening, and in particular, we wanted to highlight the efforts of Sarah Bentley, who is standing to my right, who is the national coordinator, to combat this terrible illness. And for those of you who don't know, lupus is a debilitating autoimmune disease that affects 1.5 million Americans and 5 million people worldwide. Though it can strike anyone, it primarily, in large scales, affects women of color at much higher rates than everyone else. It currently upends the lives of one in 537 black women, and it is the leading cause of death among this group. Lupus's symptoms vary widely and can range from mild to life-threatening, and it currently has no cure. And on a personal note, I often talk about lupus and the effects of lupus when talking about the loss of my twin brother, who had scleroderma, which is an autoimmune disease that gets very little attention, but shares the symptoms of lupus. All of these diseases need much attention, but in particular, I wanted to really highlight Sarah and her work that she's doing to highlight the effects of lupus, particularly on women and women of color. And so at this time, the Lupus Foundation of America has led in fighting this disorder. But I would like Sarah to say a few words about their efforts, her efforts, and make, frankly, this presentation about you. I also want to thank Juan for the work that he's doing. It also has affected him personally and his family. It's something, it's an issue, and he cares about many issues, but it's an issue he cares deeply about. And for those who are watching, Juan serves us well, a part of our essential staff on the council. But thank you for your leadership as well.
Well, thank you so much for your attention to this, as it becomes, lupus is still very under-recognized, and Walk to End Lupus now is a day where people can get together and rally around this cause and our work, as well as not feel alone in this isolating disease. And many people are trying to find their new normal with this. As it affects everyone very differently, it's a challenge to diagnose, a challenge to treat, and a challenge to live with. So on this day of awareness and empowerment, they get to spread education about lupus, actually bring their loved ones and their colleagues into the conversation, and raise money for our work, which is really to focus on that, reduce that time to diagnosis, also to ensure that these people have an arsenal of safe and effective treatments, and then also to expand our direct programs and services. So thank you so much. So that is Saturday, October 19th, on the Boston Common, where we rally, where we get together, bring out your friends and family. And then looking ahead, May is also Lupus Awareness Month of 2020.
While my colleagues come up for a picture, just quickly want to note, and thank you, Juan, that in the resolution, it actually says that the Boston City Council in this meeting does hereby proclaim Saturday, October 19th, to be Walk to End Lupus Now Day in the city of Boston. Sarah referenced the date, but in the proclamation itself to the organization, we also acknowledge that that day will now become something connected to lupus. So thank you again, Sarah. Juan, thank you. Now on to the regular order of business. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes of the last council meeting are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Document number 1403, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,160,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '21 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund a comprehensive inter-agency strategy that will, that connects law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the commonwealth.
Document 1403 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Document number 1404, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $570,000 in the form of a grant for Climate Ready Boston, awarded by the Barr Foundation, to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund staff and consultant expenses for project planning and implementation.
Document 1404 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment Sustainability in Parks.
Document number 1405, the message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant from the AARP Community Challenge, awarded by the American Association of Retired Persons, to be administered by the Public Works Department. The grant will fund the purchase of benches to be installed in the Main Streets districts throughout the city.
Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Above the objection of Counselor O'Malley, who has a bench problem, I'm asking for suspension in passage of document 1405, $10,000, well-needed across the city to make sure that we have more tools to be doing placemaking.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, who's chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 1405. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, document 1405 has been passed.
Document number 1406, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the LEGO Foundation Prime Award, awarded by the Harvard Business School, to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund research to inspire play and delight in Boston's public spaces.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a $10,000 grant from the LEGO Foundation. I believe the outlarch counsel from Rosendale was mistaken. I simply want us to build benches out of Legos, and then we'll be able to do both with one. This thing on? This is a great, this is a great, great grant. From the New Urban Mechanics, it will create a published guidebook that describes seven years of experience designing playful and delightful art and design installations for Boston's public statement. Thank you, LEGO Foundation. Who among us doesn't love Legos or didn't love Legos, or our kids or grandkids don't love Legos? This is a great partnership with the city, and I look forward to suspending rules and passing this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, who's chair of the Committee on Environment Sustainability in Parks, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 1406. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, document 1406 has been passed. If we could amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Asabi George is here. Thank you. Moving on to reports of public officers and others, if we could read documents 1407 through 1408 together. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Document number 1407, notice was received from Craig Galvin of his resignation from the zoning board of appeals. And document number 1408, communication was received from Matt Warfield, new mobility planner, regarding the submission of the quarterly report of the Small Vehicle Sharing Business Advisory Committee.
Documents 1407 through 1408 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees.
Document number 1265, the committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on January 16, 2019. Document number 1265, message in order authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $150 million in order to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, and interest on the bonds or other obligations to be refunded, and other costs. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held its hearing on Thursday, September 26, and we heard testimony from Drew Smith, treasurer, and Assistant Treasurer, Richard DiPiano. This order requests refunding authorization for $150 million, which will cover an upcoming anticipated refunding transaction and a future for potential transactions. The authorization amount allows Treasury to move quickly and to take advantage of refunding transaction opportunities when market conditions are most favorable. Refunding transactions are transactions in which new bonds are issued at more favorable rates than previously issued bonds, similar to refinancing an individual's home mortgage. The current interest rate environment presents a rare opportunity for the city to employ a tactic similar to advanced refunding, but within the constraints of the new Tax Reform Act. The upcoming transaction will involve the city issuing approximately $83 million in taxable bonds to take out approximately $79 million in older tax-exempt bonds. If executed today, this transaction will net savings of over $6 million for the city over the next 13 years, with nearly 50% of those savings realized in the next five years. The refunding transactions are credit-neutral and will not push the current debt out. This is a prudent fiscal measure that results in savings for the taxpayer. Therefore, I recommend passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. At this time, Counselor Siomo, who's chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of document 1265. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, document 1265 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Document number 1409, Counselor Edwards offer the following: petition for a special law relative to enact relative to the zoning board of appeal.
Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to first thank all of the folks who have reached out to me in the past few days, who have given me wonderful support, but also expressed that their willingness to roll up their sleeves and really get down to work. What we're talking about is a real modernization and enhancement of our zoning board. I learned that when we were going through our confirmation of several of the members, that not only was the conversation limited by statute, but it was limited by the way in which we have been, I guess, operating here in Boston, the assumptions of the way things ought to be. So when we went back and forth and talked with several of the members, you know, that's when I first really read the statute and saw that there are actual positions reserved for real estate agencies, for labor, for all different perspectives. And that, I wondered, if it's really setting us up to really, to have a limited conversation. We're dealing with the extreme development boom in Boston's history, which is a wonderful thing that's happening. We, I think, have recently learned that we're about halfway through with 30,000 units coming up. And yet, we're going through those, that development, that boom, that change of our city that's extreme, that's fast, that's intense, with a 60-year-old plan. So this is the beginning of a conversation to say, we need to do better. We need to think better, and we need to bring different perspectives to the table. Again, I'm heartened by the amount of people who've come out in support, and some people who are actually expressing some concerns, but all have said the conversation needs to happen. We have a responsibility as a city to set guidelines for development and growth, not only how to grow, but also to preserve and to protect critical assets of our neighborhoods. And zoning is the tool to do that. The rulebook is meant to ensure predictability in development and protect the public welfare. Because of how impactful zoning is in our neighborhoods, the zoning board of appeals plays a critical role across the city. The ZBA has a unique and incredible power because it grants the exceptions to the rules. That's the role of the ZBA. And so we need to update those rules to make sure that we don't govern by the exception. We also clearly need to update the ZBA. If we value the standards we set in place, it is imperative we ensure that those charged with their review are representative of our entire city. If we value the impact and participation of residents, we need to give residents a meaningful ability to know about the impact of the decisions of the ZBA in their communities. The current structure of the ZBA does not allow for full representation of these key perspectives. We need to hear from renters and homeowners, planners and fair housing experts, experts in environmental protection, and those who are experts in workers' rights, worker's safety, and those who are, and those who are specifically interested in historic preservation and assuring that we are developing a Boston for all. Today's law actually requires the membership of parties at a risk of, I think, great conflict of interest. The real estate industry should not sit on any board making regulatory decisions about real estate. Unfortunately, the unique laws that shape Boston's Board of Appeal and Zoning Commission have set up financially-interested parties as key stakeholders. Other communities do not function like this. I'm excited to discuss and to work with administration, with Sullivan and Worcester, with people in all aspects of these, of our community, in the real estate industry, in labor, bringing all perspectives. I'm excited for that conversation because it's well overdue. So I want to quickly describe what's in the proposal to make sure we're clear about what we're going to discuss. Yes, I'm talking about changing the membership of the board. We need qualified, diverse, and a representative board, that is, to the greatest extent possible, insulated from conflicts of interest. The legislation removes the real estate industry from the board. No named organizations or interests would have a permanent seat. Members and alternate members, seven each, would represent perspectives from affordable housing, civil rights, and fair housing, environmental protection, again, worker's safety protection, climate change, urban planning, homeowners, renters, and expertise in zoning and general laws. The staffing for the ZBA would be prohibited from engaging in other permitting, planning, development, or real estate functions, and prohibited from engaging in private business in these areas. There would be better notice, there'd be more transparency. The records would be available electronically and in person at City Hall and at 1010 Mass Ave, no later than seven days following a hearing. Notices of hearings would be posted and delivered electronically 20 days in advance. Contact information for the board would be posted electronically. Expanded public access means that appeals could be filed electronically, in person, or at City Hall, or at 1010 Mass Ave. We would also create the Office of Community Counsel. Because many residents walk into the ZBA hearings having absolutely no idea how this is going to work, what they're supposed to say, what the standards are. There are a lot of homeowners who feel completely blindsided and completely confused about how this works, which sets up a unique cadre of hard-working insider, wonderful attorneys who are able to navigate people through this industry. But it shouldn't be that hard to be able to petition your government that every time you go in front of them, you need legal counsel. I think the government should have a neutral counsel that's available to help navigate people, so when they show up on the day of their hearing, they could go to someone and say, so what is this about? What am I supposed to talk about? What's the procedure? Is there an appeal? Is there an appeal? What if I lose today? All of those questions should be answered by someone who's neutral, for either side, for or against, just telling them about the process, telling about the resources available to them. It makes a difference. Regular reporting is also key. Today, too much information we have on variances is anecdotal. The ZBA would be required, for the first time, to file quarterly reports on the number and type of conditional use permits or variances granted by neighborhood and zoning district, so that we can see which neighborhoods are being, I guess, developed by the exceptions to the rules, and which ones are actually having to follow the rules. That's key. That information shouldn't just be us talking to each other after hearing, and it should be regular. Financial disclosure. Right now, developers submit financial statements and ownership interest statements to the BPDA when they file their documents. So if you want to know who owns or is part of this LLC that's went and bought this tract of land, that report is actually given to the BPDA. We're going to require the same level of transparency. Not only would the ZBA members also have to file a financial interest disclosure, but also, we want to make sure that those who are seeking a variance are very clear about who also owns the property and who's owning what that variance is going to, owning the implications of that variance in the neighborhood. This really speaks to the speculation conversation that we had before, where there are many LLCs and foreign entities coming into the state and able to get a lot of things done, and no one actually knows who owns them. I want full transparency. I want to see who you are. We are dealing with a displacement crisis, and our city is trying to prevent displacement. So if you're seeking a variance on an occupied building, we have an interest in knowing what's going to happen to the building's tenants. So we'll ask people seeking a variance to submit plans to mitigate displacement and to provide information about recent or planned evictions, if you're going to go to the ZBA. We're looking also at the standards that we use. Right now, the question that we have before us is whether 60-year-old standards should be applied for granting a variance in 2019. I think we can all agree they need to be updated. Not everything needs to go away. They certainly need to have more perspectives in there. Why aren't we asking about OSHA violations? Why are we asking about whether the folks are getting a prevailing wage? Why are we asking these questions? The ZBA would be required to look at consistency with the neighborhood planning, affordable housing goals, and climate change. Again, these are perspectives that are necessary for any city to be developing as fast as we are in today's, today's world. Finally, there's an additional conflict of interest protections. We add these new protections to really stop any form of conflict of interest. People engaged in construction, development, purchase, or sale of real estate would be ineligible for membership on the ZBA. I understand that there are a lot of people who are concerned about whether those perspectives, especially workers' rights, whether those perspectives will be completely eliminated. I will work with anybody to make sure that those rights are at the table. But the question really is, is are we setting ourselves up for conflicts of interest? This should not also be a revolving door. The city of Boston would be able to require that members will not be engaged in the business of real estate construction, development, purchase, or sale within the city for up to five years after their term on the service on the ZBA concludes. Again, there should be no revolving door. You've left the ZBA, you can turn around and engage in business on things that you just voted on, on things that you just had an impact. It's a tough conversation. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues and getting as many perspectives as possible, but let's be honest, it's a necessary, very necessary conversation that we need to have as a city of Boston. It's a grown-up conversation. We cannot continue the way we're going. We cannot have development according to the exceptions of the rules. We need the rules, we need the members of the ZBA, and we can help do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, as well as the chair. Document 1409 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Document number 1410, Counselor O'Malley offer the following: order for a hearing regarding snow removal jurisdiction for certain public properties in the city of Boston.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, I won't say it's a refile because we actually had the hearing, but I first introduced this hearing in September of 2011, and I believe none of you were on the body at the -- oh, Mark, of course, I'm sorry. How could I forget our dean? I'm sorry, our good friend from Austin-Brighton. And it was a very worthwhile hearing, because how many times have we dealt with a major snow event, and then dealt with constituents calling, and then tried to put in touch with the right person, and the state says, no, it's city, and the city says, well, it's MBTA, and the MBTA says, no, it's DCR? And it becomes sort of this, this pointing fingers at one another. And when, at the end of the day, the constituent who calls our office, or tweets at us, or runs into us, you know, as we're trying to deal with the damage, doesn't care whose jurisdiction it is, they just want it safe and clean for their sake. We've had situations, we have a number of railroad bridges that go over commuter rail lines in West Roxbury, and we've had folks shoveling out themselves, neighbors, residents, myself, local electeds. And it's important that we recognize that there's an opportunity here to just sit down before the winter starts in earnest, you know, we're just in the first weeks of autumn, where we sit down with the relevant stakeholders in a non-controversial setting. I mean, if anything, I think that snow removal has gotten better in this city over the last six years, significantly so. But I also think it's good to sit down with But I also think it's good to sit down with one another, make sure we have open, clear lines of communication, some of the benefits that came from the last hearing. There was some sort of no-man's-land between a MBTA parking lot in a school that was unclear who had jurisdiction, and our good friend Tom Tinlin, who was BTD Commissioner at the time, decided to take it on, and then there was another area that we had identified, I believe in your district, Madam President, that the T had agreed to take control over. So it's just a helpful opportunity to sit down, focus on these things, and make sure that we have the best plan going forward. And then finally, to have this opportunity to check in with constituents as well. I have many state roads in my district, one being the Arbor Way, where we had some residents come and mentioned that the plows have the angle in such a way that it constantly builds up that wall of snow when they're treating the streets that blocks in the driveway. So the simple, yet very effective suggestion to change the angle of the blade would then push the snow up into the median and into a place where nobody lives and people actually don't traverse that often. So it just made sense, it was one of those simple things. So this is something that I hope we can get on the books at some point in October or early November. I will say in closing, I did this in September of 2011. We had a total of ten point, or twelve-point-one inches of snow that winter. I did not do this in 2014, and we had a hundred and eight inches of snow that winter. So I'm partially doing all of us a favor by calling this hearing now, because obviously there will be a minimal amount of snow. And to quote Michael Scott, a poet-philosopher, "I'm not superstitious, but I am a little stitious." So looking forward to a good hearing soon. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilor O'Malley. Councilor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, my good friend from District Six. I believe I was actually at that hearing, I believe I was sitting right where Eddie Flynn is sitting, on the other side of that table. This is a really important issue. The MBTA, the DCR, CSX, city of Boston, there are so many moving parts to who owns what. And it's going to be imperative for our district city councils to really step up at this hearing, at least to target or red-flag places that have been notoriously absent. I know that we took a pretty good beating last year from, you know, the news outlets about one stretch that was owned by the MBTA, and people, the people who own these sidewalks and have to maintain these sidewalks, they do have to step up, and they have to come up with a plan. And if the encouragement comes from the District Six City Council, then I encourage it. So I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you, and I wish to sign on.
Thank you, Councilor McCarthy. Councilor Flaherty --
Please add my name.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you could add, Councilor Flaherty and Councilor McCarthy, as well as Councilor Baker, Councilor Siomo, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Garrison, Councilor Janey, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 1410 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs.
Docket number 1411, Councilor Zachem offer the following: An ordinance to create the Boston Stands Together for Reducing Ongoing National Gun Violence Act, the Boston Strong Act.
Councilor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will try to be brief, because I think the title and the provisions of this ordinance are fairly self-explanatory. But I do want to note that the burden, unfortunately, is on cities like Boston, on states like Massachusetts, to take action in the face of ongoing national gun violence due to complete abdication of responsibility by the federal government, by Congress, by this president to put in common sense gun control regulations, to make sure that dangerous weapons are not in the hands of dangerous people. And absent comprehensive federal firearms regulation and reform, it's incumbent upon cities and towns to act, and one way that we can act is using our role in the marketplace. As a consumer, financial services from financial services institutions, as a purchaser of public safety equipment, the largest purchasers of firearms in this country are governments, local, state, and federal governments. We have an opportunity to influence the behavior of these manufacturers, retailers, and other vendors through setting standards and reporting. Now, this legislation is an initial step. What it says is that we are going to ask for any public safety vendor that the Boston Police Department contracts services or goods from, or any financial institution that the city of Boston contracts with for financial services, whether it's our day-to-day banking, which we currently use Citizens Bank, I believe Councilor Siomo recently had a hearing on that subject, on a new contract for that, we're going to ask them for some basic information on whether these corporations have adopted their own policies around common sense of gun control, whether they are looking to make sure that they have internal policies that prevent sales to people who are on watch lists, who are prohibited otherwise from purchasing guns, convicted felons, people under current restraining orders, to prevent, detect, and screen for straw purchasing of firearms. Many of the gun crimes that occur in cities like Boston, and many of our peer cities that have similarly strict firearms regulations, are bought in other places, are bought by individuals who go and purchase many firearms at one time, and then bring into our cities and towns and sell them. Have these companies train their employees and put in policies, whistleblower-type policies, to make sure these provisions are complied with. And are they also set up to assist law enforcement in investigations? This is just a start. We're asking for this information as a city, as a consumer, not a regulator in this situation, because unfortunately, the federal government is the entity that should and could be regulating this industry, but as a consumer, as a purchaser, we need to use our market influence to do this. And I also be remiss if I didn't note, we're not the first place to be doing this. We drew great inspiration from New Jersey, which recently used their power through executive order, their governor, Governor Murphy, statewide, talking about billions of dollars, while Boston's influence in this area is going to be in the millions of dollars. New Jersey is in billions, and we have to add our voice to that discussion. More and more cities need to be doing this. We've seen, although it's been slow and somewhat begrudging, we've seen corporations like Walmart change their internal policies to make it harder for folks to commit crimes of gun violence. So this is a start. Look forward to having a hearing, working with you, my colleagues, with our public safety personnel, with the chief financial officer of the city, with the Walsh administration, to make sure that when we're spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money, whether it's on financial services or public safety equipment, we're at least getting that basic information from these companies about how they're putting these values into action, and that can then inform our future choices of who to contract with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zachem. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add, Councilor Baker, Councilor Siomo, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Janey, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Wu, as well as the Chair. Docket 1411 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1412, Councilor Edwards offer the following: Resolution relative to preventing discrimination against natural hairstyles.
Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I rise today to actually stand in support of already pending legislation. It just was filed, actually, September 18th in Massachusetts by Representative Altrino. And this, I became aware of this legislation when I began, when I was asked to be a panelist on discussing regulating girls' bodies. And in that panelist position, I was discussing dress codes in schools, but also hair. And it's through that research, we realized the amount of overregulation of natural hair that disproportionately impacts black girls, and as a result, prevents them from going to school, has increased the amount of times they've been expelled. What we found in that research is that majority of the reasons that black girls are actually disciplined in school, I mean, is because of dress code violations and hair code violations. It was shocking to me, because my hair is natural. And the way that the regulation was written for the local Mystic Valley Charter School would have prevented me, as a young girl, to go to school there. It would prevent me from working there. So I had to come forward, not only to support this legislation, but to give you a face to who this law would be impacting, a younger version of me, older version, whatever, but it would have hurt me, my children, and I want you to understand what a slap in the face those kinds of regulations are from the very outset, when they tell you the way your hair is growing is so offensive that you shouldn't be able to wear it that way. Natural means just that. My hair grows out this way, proudly kinky, proudly nappy, that's my hair. And it has been a journey to actually say that out loud and be proud of that, from chemicals to weaving in other women's hair and my hair, and it's a journey a lot of Black women go on. And I can't help but think that we're on that journey, because when you go to school and try to get an education, if you are looking at policies that tell you the way your hair is naturally is so disgusting that you can't do this. The example happened in Malden. Two young girls went to school with braids in their hair, and they were told to leave the school. A young girl who had natural hair was told not only to leave the school, but she needed to go get it straightened before she came back. We're not talking about twenty, thirty, fifty years ago, we're talking about the last two to three years that this has happened, and it's been allowed in these school policies. Now, I'm, before I go too far, I'm going to do my research on our own dress code policies and our own hair policies in Boston public schools and any charter school in Boston. But for right now, we wouldn't have to do that or worry about BPS doing anything, if it is, if we all support this wonderful pending legislation, again, by Representative Altrino, who represents the school that actually had discriminated against young girls. It's House Bill 4497, and I would encourage all of my colleagues to hopefully, hopefully we'll suspend and pass and support this resolution, but also to call all of our colleagues in the State House to sign their names to this resolution and to make sure it gets done, and that we join California, New York, who have also banned discrimination. And again, this isn't just about freedom of expression, this would be literally about Lydia being able to go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards. At this time, anyone else looking -- Councilor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I rise to applaud my good friend and sister-in-service, Councilor Lydia Edwards, for putting forth this resolution, as another sister who is happy to be nappy. I support it wholeheartedly, and I understand this issue deeply. If you recall, just at last week's meeting, I had long goddess locks. Today, I have my beautiful twist in my flower that my good friend over here admires. This is important. I was on the front line of that fight in Malden with Deanna and Maya Cook when this was playing out, and this is about letting our young girls just learn, letting young black girls in particular learn. This is, we should not be trying to mandate how people's hair grows out of their head and whether or not they can access school or in work. So I stand in full support. And I also just want you to know, I stand in full support of your ordinance around ZBA. I didn't speak then, but I think it's a very important tool for us, and that it will increase transparency, so thank you for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janey. Add your name. Oh, yes. Mr. Clerk, if you could add, Councilor Janey, if you could add, Councilor Baker, Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Garrison, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zachem, and certainly the Chair. So thank you, Councilor Edwards, for bringing this forward. At this time, Councilor Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1412. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1412 has been adopted. I am informed by the clerk that there are three late-file matters. You don't have them, they're all personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the first late-file into the record.
Councilor Campbell for Councilor McCarthy.
Councilor McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has been passed.
Councilor Campbell for Councilor McCarthy.
Councilor McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The second late-file matter has been passed.
And Councilor Campbell for Councilor Garrison.
Councilor Garrison seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The third late-file matter has been passed. At this time, anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Moving right along. I'm informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. Any announcements? Okay. At this time, if all colleagues, guests, and staff could please rise. As we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councilor McCarthy, Susan Sullivan. For Councilor Edwards, Rose Alosi. For Councilor Siomo, Olivia Smith Frederick. E. Marie Forley. For Councilors Flaherty and Flynn, John Magdalene, Margaret Morrell, Agnes Powers, and John Barry. For Councilor Flaherty, Louise Wright Dotton. James Joseph Sullivan. And for the entire council, Catherine Prentice, Eric Prentice's mom. Thank you. When the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again in this chamber at Boston City Hall on Wednesday, October 9th, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned. Thank you.[1703.65][1703.65]